Okay, good. Call the meeting to order. Um, just as a reminder to everyone, just um, we will have privilege of the floor. If you're interested in speaking at that time, it's more general comment if you want to speak specifically to a project. We actually don't have any public hearings tonight. Um, we may be scheduling one for projects. Um, and please just wait to be called upon to speak and we will. Um, let's see. So first, first, any additions or deletions to the agenda?
The only thing I just want to add is just talking about females, but we can do that at the very end.
Okay.
After Casey.
Okay. Next, is there anyone who would like to have privilege of the floor? I think now with the new speaker, you don't have to stand up if you want to. Oh, if you want to see. Yeah.
Hi, I hardly ever get here from saying word years in person, but anyway, I would say thank you all for everything that you do. It's really important. And I appreciate the efforts that you're all making to make businesses possible, et cetera, et cetera. So that's it for now, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else with privilege of the floor? Rhonda? Speaking through your hand, but not your face.
Okay, there I am. Okay, so I was looking at the plans for the first uh, property and I wanted to say that everybody has to keep in mind that Greg was not here when we spent uh, many, many, many meetings had redoing the zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance, what we came up with, one of the things that we came up with was that people would not be allowed to have long driveway unless it was a multiple use driveway or a multiple family driveway. And so I see that the first people have a nine hundred and forty-five foot driveway if I'm reading the documents correctly. That is about twice as long as we had decided that driveways should be five hundred feet maybe. If you want to go beyond that, must have multiple families attached to it. Now, there is a way that we could get around that. And it is a kind of quid pro quo thing. I noticed that you have, the people have a hundred and one acres. So, you know, maybe we could agree to exchange a conservation easement on the property for a single use nine hundred and forty-five foot driveway. Uh, that's about the only way that something like that could happen. Thank you.
Yes, something up with that connection. Thank you, Rhonda. No, okay.
I have a note to make. I just occurred to me when I saw Tom here that I've, I've worked with Tom before, assisting colleagues, so on a different, I just feel like I need to put that out there. I'm not benefiting in any way from this allocation. Okay.
All right. Um, next is approval of the minutes from May. Um, I don't know if everyone else read them. I admitted earlier that since I haven't been checking my email, I forgot to read them. So I don't know if anyone else missed it because of the email situation, if we want to defer it to next month or we should move forward.
So just sort of churning on that, that yeah, if you haven't read the minutes, you do need to abstain. So you can always punt the minutes for next meeting. And so and I would do want to talk about emails because everybody across the board in town is having email issues as we transition to Outlook, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five and all. So um, yeah, we'll talk about that at the end in terms of logistics or how to get you all connected to your email. But if you haven't read the minutes, just okay, just.
Yeah, it's enough. There was more of us that hadn't read them.
I read them by accident anyway, because I wasn't here.
Oh.
I have not read them. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So maybe we'll just punt them to next month. Am I allowed to make that determination?
Yep.
Okay. All right. How more leads on report? Joel, are you picking that one?
Sure, I'm looking through my notes for what happened in the last two meetings since the last time you were updated. Um, we decided as part of our allocation of ARPA money to codify the town's laws, which will be a great help to the public in terms of accessing and also to our staff people in terms of administering. And in, and also in terms of interfacing with any software we might enact and adopt. So that was a, that, that money is kind of committed for that purpose. Um, we're in the process of applying for another CDBG um, community development block grant for housing rehab. And Greg could probably break you on, on the specifics of that. Um, let's see. Looking for what's of interest. At the last meeting, which was just uh, Monday, we, we agreed to um, well, we had a long, pretty long discussion with Warren Cross on where do we go next with the noise law. And Warren convinced the board that we really uh, it would be helpful to have a working group, a panel, he called it, to look at the specifics of what kind of noise is objectionable and, and, and come up with some objective standards as, as well as a subjective standard to be included in a quote unquote simple law. And we're looking for people to participate on that. Uh, we don't want people who are dead set against noise law. The, the, the board is pretty much committed to doing some sort of noise law. Question is, what exactly should it look like? So if any of you would be interested in being part of that group, we don't want huge numbers of people, but we have a starting group consisting of Pat um, Woodworth, Paul Hanson on the, on the board, uh, and, and a couple of other ideas, as well as Greg, if Greg's blowing, but he wasn't there to ask. Uh, we had a discussion about the junk um, around town and its enforcement, as well as the derelict buildings and whether we're willing to um, well, chase grant funds to take down dilapidated dwellings mostly uh, or spend town money to do it, because what often happens is that the properties are worth less after you demolish than they were before. And you can't get your money back out, even with a lien. Um, but let's see. Those are, those are the most relevant things, I think.
Thank you, Joel. All right. On to our first development review. So this is for parcel, well, this is twenty sixteen Dambie Road. Um, applicants Catherine and Tom. Would you like to just give kind of a brief summary of what you're doing or okay?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Um, yeah, so we are.
I don't know. They want to see you on screen. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so we are relocating from Virginia with our two kids. Um, and we bought the parcel twenty sixteen Dambie Road about two, well, two years ago. Initially, we thought it was going to be more long-term plans, but the more time we spent here, the more we wanted to live here. Um, we're actually moving basically right now to a temporary house we own in Brighton. Uh, but the idea is to go with on the, um, the land there. So we want to build a house there. Um, and the reason we picked the location where it is, is when the, when we bought the land, there was a subdivision of two acres in front, um, to an older gentleman, a little bit there of a garage. There's actually not enough space to build the house on the front of the road where there used to be a house. And so we want to build it further up the hill, um, so that we can use the land that's right next to the barns for farming, orchard, things like that. And then the house will be located up on, at the hill right before the woods start. On the point about the road, there is already a driveway there. It's basically a farm road that leads to a Evergreen Farm that's up on the hill as well.
Okay.
So in, in terms of adding new driveway, it would only be the last couple of, I don't know how much it is, under two hundred feet to go to the house. Um, but the road itself is already there.
Thank you.
Do you want me to pull it up on the screen?
I know, we'll probably want to talk to you at some point, but.
The map was too small for me to read.
Yeah.
I didn't put it on the floor.
I know, right? And spread it out, yeah.
I didn't have my work desk. I'm used to that on my work desk.
I was just, I was initially concerned that we had about five or six things to do.
Yeah.
But it had everything on there. It was detailed. That was nice.
Yep, don't be scared.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it came in huge pack. I was like, okay.
Yeah.
Things I didn't expect.
Okay.
Any maybe comment, question?
You're going to bring it up, Greg?
Um, I mean, I certainly can. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we could at least start going through there was a detailed summary of the ground disturbance, which so I guess I, I have a question then on the ground disturbance, because if there's already a road, it shows you the calculated, it was non-disturbance?
It would be calculating the total impervious area.
In the impervious phenomenon.
Yeah. Yeah, so that was on the map.
People have concerns about the house being that far from the main road.
And the comment about that, sorry, just to keep on this, uh, they should be grounded, so they did. As part of their, when they were working with me to put this together. Um, we did talk about stormwater controls, just with the area disturbed, posed, just to make sure that some of the, the um, basic sweat requirements, the stormwater pollution prevention, flame hazards are in. And so these will get also inspected by me at various points during the uh, construction process to make sure that they're not impacting um, any other part of the property or especially the road too with, with construction. Um, and then as well as the pond that is uh, near their house, the side of the house.
Can you go back to the one about the septic and the um, so why, why?
Didn't show the septic in there.
Yeah, dude.
It's just like.
Here we go.
Has.
Yeah, there you go.
Has Department of Health been out yet? Do we do that? Or is this just a sketch? Like the placement, because that's going to have to be.
There's no word.
Yeah, okay.
That we needed to fix some of the design, we needed to have you guys approve that we can build so that we can go talk to the.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just, just want to check the septic. It seems like everything should shed straight. That wouldn't be an issue versus shedding.
Yeah, I think the pond is actually elevated into the hill, um, like point us as it seems like all of, all on the left hand side of the septic is, is like down.
Right. Um. I guess I like, when I drove out there again today, because I've been kind of watching it, just noticing the fence in the front and the camper out there. What's going on over there? Um, it, I guess it's hard to view from the road, I guess, without really like pulling off into the driveway to see if it's in the view of other houses near there, but because they're all kind of clustered right along ninety-six.
Yeah.
Um, as you know, as rural one is like about keeping open view sheds, but I think because it is probably right up by the forest.
There's.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, like if you're right, the trees are right behind it. Yeah.
Maybe. Maybe.
I don't know what's gone on on the screen today.
And there actually you can see it on both sides.
Right, yeah.
There's an apartment building kind of five hours driveway, but then it also shoots like trees.
Okay.
And then to the other side of it, I think that's like the house. Yes, it's maybe a little bit of it, but it's mostly.
All right, so no one has any concern, questions, then I guess we're on to preliminary. What do we call it?
If you're. Here and.
Before we can begin any. Okay. Okay, so we would just have to do the public hearing next month, right? Because we haven't done notifications for public hearing for the meeting. Oh, you did? Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I missed the introduction. Okay.
All right, so we already declared the agency?
It's a, it's a fact to.
Well, good.
Yeah.
All right.
What?
Now I open the public hearing.
Yeah, let's do it.
All right. There's anyone who wishes to comment on their public hearing for twenty sixteen Dambie Road? Nope. Uh, okay. All of them being none, we'll close the public hearing. If anyone would like to propose action. I guess we can just raise the final.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Craig, did you have any further comments on your analysis by the consideration you noticed?
No, I mean, the biggest thing I think with just any project like this that's um, you know, and there's, there is a long driveway, uh, you know, it's, as you saw, it's, it's over half an acre of, of disturbed area. The biggest thing is just stormwater during construction. So that's just, that's just um, stormwater enforcement that I'll be working with the, the owner and their consultant on during um, during the construction process, just various points of inspection to go out there and make sure that sediment controls are in place and everything. You know, so in, in terms of just this, this isn't allowed use, it's a permitted uh, or, or, you know, it's permitted use allowed by site plan review. Um, they are far exceeding the setbacks. There's no requirement. Even if the, the wish is to have or intention is to have shorter driveways, um, there is no requirement for that. And I would not advise the board to condition this approval to have a shorter driveway. And do that, or I wouldn't condition this approval to force the property owner into a conservation easement. That is entirely their um, that is their choosing, you know, there, there are other processes in the town where the town can um, require certain conservations. When you do a major subdivision process, you can condition a subdivision approval to have certain conserved areas, but this is not one of them. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't entertain that.
Thanks.
Um, something that, uh, what did, and a similar project was um, dark sky lighting. Why? Um, and since this, this home will be sitting above, you know, pretty beautiful valley in Dambie, um, you know, that might be something to.
Yes.
Advocants on it just.
I do, maybe for the geosaram, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot, sure.
We had a sentence.
Yeah.
Uh, dark sky lighting.
I think I already talked about it.
Really just like not going light across the whole field.
Yeah.
So it's all lit up like the giant Christmas tree.
I think with that in there, I'd be, okay, I'd move it forward. Maybe you can make a motion to.
Okay.
Move it forward with the stipulation.
Do you need a second? I could second you. Yeah, sorry. I was waiting for some.
Yes.
Over?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
So um, we will acknowledge this approval and then there you can submit this for.
Probably know. Yeah.
You're welcome to stay or go.
For work with you daily.
Thanks a lot, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I just think it's nice that we have younger families building places, more places around. Yeah.
I, I think it's worth remarking before it happens again that although you can hear people speaking from the audience, those of us on Zoom, it's, it's too far from the microphone to pick up.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. I thought it crossed the room, so I would have called them up more if I, I just assumed they could hear from the high end. Okay. I thought, oh, okay. All right, next development review for nineteen fourteen Dambie Road, discussion on the coffee truck. So do you want to start with updating us on where they are outside?
Yeah, yeah, so this is so kind of, so back in, it was in February, I think, so um, Zach and Heather came to the board to um, talk about constructing a brick and mortar coffee shop and bakery. And there were some other plans for having some residential units. Um, and you know, it was, it was a sketch plan and, but there were still a lot of questions and, you know, timing on, on, on development. And there was the question of building a road because of restaurants use in this zone district, the Hamlet Neighborhood Zone District requires um, corner lot, to be on a corner lot, right? Not the Hamlet Center. So we're in the Hamlet Center here. So like the market across the street, uh, is not on a corner, but they're allowed to operate just with site plan approval. Whereas where Zach and Heather lives, just down the road is Hamlet Neighborhood, got to be on a corner. So they were considering constructing a road to town specifications. Um, so there are uh, well, there's, there's sort of some parallel tracks here in terms of approvals that are, that they're exploring. Um, this, I think I put in my memo that they are, have applied for an area variance from the border zoning appeals. So between the last time that you all um, saw this proposal and now some other uh, things were explored on their end, such as applying for a rezoning even. Um, uh, maybe approaching the town and asking for the Hamlet Neighborhood Zone District to be amended, which is something that has been at least verbally supported on the town board's end and planning board has voiced support for it. Um, but the property owner, these, these folks have just taken it on themselves to say, well, that they have a right to also apply for variances. And so they just have, they're essentially moving quicker than, than what we're uh, moving on. And um, this is an area variance or it could, it could be an area variance approval, um, because it has to do with location. Um, it's tricky. I, I, I thought it was, had to do, it would have been a use variance because a certain use isn't allowed, but it has to do with location. I can break that down a little bit more if need be, but the, the, the bottom line is that they are applying for an area variance for going before the border zoning appeals next week to seek approval to allow a restaurant use um, or a place they're serving food and beverages, not a drive-through, that's, that's part of the zoning to allow it on a, on a non-cornered lot. On, on their lot.
Would you mind, Greg, just breaking it down? Why is it an area use and not a, or why is it an area, about area and not use?
Right. Because it has to do with location. And so the, the restaurant use isn't a permitted use in the zone district. It's just about.
But it has to have a road next, has to be a corner.
Yeah.
To be a restaurant.
And, and this was actually um, the, the, the town attorney's uh, opinion. I was writing about um, I think a couple of things, and I mentioned this standard. Um, and, and he just wrote a brief, just message saying that, that this is, that this is a th- this would be appropriate for an area variance.
Okay.
Um, and yeah, because I, I originally thought it would be a use variance. I thought, well, the, the use isn't allowed here, that's allowed up here. So it's going to be a use variance, which is something that I would never advise anybody to apply for. Um, and it just, there, it's just, it's a very high bar. You might as well seek a rezoning or try to work with the town on, on working something out, but a use variance is just very difficult. Um, you really have to show like very unique hardship about the property that's completely out of your control um, to allow a certain use. So yeah, the, the opinion from Guy Felt was that it's, this is based on location, that the use is permitted in the zone district. It's just about location. So you can, he can seek a variance or location.
And that's easier to work through?
We'll see. I, I just sent out packets today to the boarding, to, to the, to the border zoning appeals. Um, it's, it's a typically the, the BZAC sees setback variances. Height variances, more, more dimensional variances. So this is something very unique where they're going to see a, a location variance. Um, but so I suggested to Zach that he come back to the planning board. There's no action that is on the agenda. It's more just a discussion. So it's completed up to the board. How long you want to talk about this? Um, but uh, you know, it might be worth just hearing from, from Zach and Heather just about like what they're thinking. Um, and so let me just, before we actually pass it over to them. There's not a clear, there's nothing clear about approving a food truck or a temporary food trailer of sorts. Um, so the way I'm looking at it as even though it is temporary, it's still a restaurant use. It is, I mean, it's not a house, right? It's not, it, it is a restaurant use. So this is something that I, as an, an, a planning administrator, I can't approve that. Um, it, it, a restaurant use has to be approved by the planning board. So even though it is temporary, I still think just to be sure and, and um, transparent and just, I think it's just going through the right motions. The planning board should review it and should ultimately be the, be the approving agency on it. Especially, you know, for this, you'll see that there's, they're proposing some parking spots. So there will be some ground disturbance and when they do build the coffee shop and bakery in the future, um, some of those parking spots might go away and there'll be some changes to the layout. But ultimately, I didn't feel comfortable in my capacity to approve a uh, this, this coffee trailer. If there was an existing restaurant use there and they wanted to have a little coffee cart out front, that would be fine because there would already be a restaurant approval and they're just adding something else like that. But it's one of these things where there was, it's this real gray area and I'm leaning to be a little bit more on the conservative side. I'm just saying, I think it should just go through planning board on this. Um, regardless, they will have to get an operating permit from Stephen Portwright. And that, uh, that operating permit is I don't know all the specifics about uh, what it has to go through, but there is, there is county health approval. And, and it's good for one year. So, so the permit is, is a temporary permit. Um, and then they will have to come back and, and uh, get it again or apply again. I think that's all I wanted to. I think that's all I wanted to make care of. Any other questions about that sort of line of thinking on my end of, you know, just putting in front of the planning board.
The only thing I thought of on my leg here was the old pizza ice cream shop. I was like, oh, what if they just moved into the old ice cream shop for a little bit and fully after rebuilding them? But I don't know if that's still licensed under anything because he hasn't opened in like three years.
Yeah.
I heard that was why.
And also not paying to the management of our success to.
Yeah, yeah.
And and that reminded me of another thing, too. So if somebody in a different zone district, let's say a rural two or rural one, that's predominantly just the residential or agricultural zone district, if they wanted to do what they're proposing, that wouldn't be a lot, that would have to be a sort of use variance. So the only
Because it looks pretty disgusting.
Uh, it must have been pretty disgusting.
Right?
Yeah, right.
Like if your grandfather did it, that's pretty disgusting.
Right.
What if it was related to a farm, farm?
That'd be fine. So so like like South Coast side, how they serve food. Yeah.
So what if they said about a like a vegetable stand?
That's.
Farmers could use and then that's and then now the property is farm, so can they also have a coffee truck with the vegetable?
Might be stretching them. Yeah, I mean, I see where you're going with that because.
Coffee and vegetables.
Yeah.
I mean, there I have seen those like across the county, but I don't know how.
I think you're limited to baked goods if you're going with that. This is my version.
Oh, do you mean they always?
Like a farm stand, like under under like agricultural
Yes.
Use. Yeah, I think farmers can be limited to baked goods. I don't like this. It's anything else beverages.
It's probably really average, though.
What's that?
That is.
Wouldn't that have a coffee plant growing in the property? No, I mean, if you're just what you're allowed to sample from a from a farm stand, I think you're limited to vegetables and baked goods.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not like, I don't specialize in this, but I'm.
I remember going through some of these discussions, both with the guy that wanted to do the prep for the falafel place down it.
Oh, yeah.
And then also, and then also that farm that's also a school, there were there were discussions about farm stands and what it could be.
Well, there was that happy one basically built a restaurant. They said it was going to be part of their farm and then it was like, well, not really. Your farm is way back here and.
Yeah.
It was gonna be a ninety six billion.
Eric, what's the difference between temporary and permanent? I mean, in other words, just the health department say, well, you only have to have half of whatever facility or what would be, what would be the difference?
You know, at at this point, I think it's it's really just a call that I'm making. But also just just looking at it, that it's a it's a food truck, it's it's coffee trailer, food trailer. That's 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 and because that by health code and building code, you know, wherever it's the Steve Portwright sort of area, it requires an operating permit is temporary. It is a temporary use.
So if it's a food truck and the permit, you can't get a permanent permit for a food truck, in other words.
Right. I think it's like a annual thing, kind of like, like a registration on a vehicle. Like you have to renew it.
That's what it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think part of that has to do with the health department issues is that you have to follow the same. I mean, if you read the things in the paper of the restaurants downtown.
Don't you have like inspections with the market?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have the link to the health department. I can send it right to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, it it is a little of a gray area. I don't, you know, I don't know how many food trucks have come to town. I know that you know, down here at the gathering, the owner of the gatherings talked about having the food truck out and parking up there. But yeah, in in a previous job, it was just, we would just, if a restaurant was allowed and somebody wanted to have a food truck there, it was just a very, a very shortened route. It was just an administrative process. It didn't have to go through. It was just, yes, you can have this and we, it was a temporary permit that they were allowed for six months or however long and then had to get reissued. There's not really a clear cut process like that here in Dambi for grabbing the food truck. So I'm just erring on the side of, well, let's just send it through planning board. It is a little bit more, you know, maybe more involved than than everyone might like to be, but it seems seems appropriate. I mean, so the the property is being used right now is their place of residence. They're adding another use. That that use typically, though, is permanent, is is a has to go through a site under due. So I'm just looking at it like that. They just to jump over the area variance request, that is not necessarily for the coffee trailer specifically. That's just for to to allow restaurant use on this property, whether it's temporary or permanent. So they would need to do that anyway for their their permanent shop. But these are good questions. I mean, these are all things that I've been kind of mulling over a little bit as we've as that and it talks about. Just how to how to how to make this worker and a lot of it is really applicant driven, it's like property owner driven that you know, they they could rely on the town to start amending and tweaking the zoning to make it work. And that's still as Joel reminded us on the last meeting and maybe he'll remind us now that I've been mandated to, you know, work on work on that and to amend it. I think I'm moving a little, I'm moving a little bit slower than Zach. Zach is able as a property owner to apply for variance and I'm gonna have to put that through the borders on appeals. So he's moving once in quicker, I think, than I'm unable to work on. Do you want to call him Joel?
Sure, Joel.
I'm just curious whether or not they're going to take the truck on the road.
We're taking the trailer on the road.
I feel like you've seen that trailer, Joel.
It's not that true.
Have I? You say I have trouble hearing you because you're not in the range of the microphone. I can hear you're speaking Heather, but not what you're saying.
They're saying no. They have no intention of taking it on the road.
Okay.
Were you hoping for it to come to West Dambi?
Well, yeah. We've had food trucks that like the, we had a summer concert we haven't done in a couple of years. Well, it stopped with COVID. We haven't resumed. But we had an ice cream truck come one year. Trying to remember if there was something else, too. Anyway, it was kind of a nice way to enhance the event without having to actually do it yourself.
Where where was the, where was the ice cream truck located? How long did they operate?
This was, this was for one time event. It was a concert at 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 Myers', Wayne Myers' property on Michigan Hollow Road. He's got a beautiful. Yeah, we had a, we had a summer concert and we had, you know, that was part of the town funded concert money that I'd say, I think it was a community council that got the, got the grant money to do the concerts and that was one of the concerts that was that was paid for with that grant money. And we had an ice cream, basically an ice cream social in conjunction with the with the event. And I forget whose ice cream truck it was that came out, but it was a big hit having it in, you know, in in July, I think it was, having that truck there. It it was the sort of thing you might have had at, you know, at the Dambi Fun Day, too, you know.
Like that's fish right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's like they're, I think they must be permanent by the, because they just go all over.
They go all over the place.
By county.
Right, right.
Or they're.
Because they're short term.
Yeah.
Yeah, like several hours.
I would like to make this as easy as possible, too. I think yeah, I think that this is a little bit different, right? It's not, this isn't just an event.
Right, yeah.
It's more of a.
You can call it one of that.
Like if you put on music, right?
But I.
Literally come up with three hundred fifty six events, I'm honest. Yeah, that's a method G in like two weeks.
So my my recommendation is just just a simple site plan, not the whole kind of full blown site plan. I don't know, but I'd be curious to hear what the board members think. I mean, this is, I'm suggesting it's it's your approval, but if you think otherwise, just.
And sometimes I think if it were not a restaurant, just because I didn't look at it this way before I got here, we had the discussion, would we be reviewing the site plan for a different business use for like their parking stuff? If it were like, if it were a permitted use on the property, would we be reviewing that for parking under this zone?
No.
Okay.
The only, the only permitted uses that that we can approve administratively are just up to four residential units and agriculture.
What about daycare and things like that?
Oh, yes. So there, yeah, thank you. So there, there's also accessory, right?
Yeah, like accessory uses. Would we have to review site plan for accessory?
Permitted by right now. So there there is, I mean, so there are things accessory structures related to the business use up to four hundred square feet. We call this an accessory structure related to the business. I think so. And it's probably less than four hundred square feet. They haven't.
But that would have to be after the area.
Yeah, or they haven't.
The area for for the business.
Or they have to get their, I would think they'd have to get their site plan approved
For the business, for the purpose.
To then allow this an accessory structure.
If it was a so it's there's a loud business, restaurant's the only business that has to have be on a corner lot or there are other parks in that zone where they can have different types of businesses, just not a restaurant because it's not on a corner lot.
Yeah, so there's so other, so your question is, are there other businesses that are allowed that don't have to be in a corner?
Correct.
Yeah.
In that part of the zone.
Community centers, childcare centers.
Because there's no drop off and pickup, but never mind. Sorry, I guess that's just interesting that.
Libraries, museums, multiple drilling units, five or more units, public and private schools, nurseries, public and privately owned, community parks, residential care, rehabilitation facilities, those are allowed by site plan approval on the property right now. And at the corner lots, there's four religious institutions, restaurants, bars included, including that, repair shops. And then retail uses for the four things.
I wonder if there's a thought of like hours of the day. That's what it seems like.
Although, I mean, I remember dropping, our kids were still at daycare, you know, I mean, like you're going like busiest time in the morning, like rush hour morning, rush hour afternoon, picking up and dropping off and I guess they're not as busy or constant. It's just weird, you know what I mean? Like for someplace where you do a lot of drop off and pickup, you don't have to be on a corner lot, but for if the restaurant has been pulled out of that and said, no, you have to, although I guess churches do, too, you said.
Yeah, the corner lot seems.
So there are six properties in the Hamlet neighborhood, and talking about just the central dam, central Hamlet here, I'm not but there are six properties here in the central Dambi Hamlet neighborhood that meet this. Two of them are very encumbered by repair and buffer. I mean, they couldn't, they will probably never be developed. Is there enough flood plain? So truly, there's about four properties that would be able to host a restaurant or a bar, places of certain food in the Hamlet neighborhood. Is.
I mean, if they get their variance next week, then they come back to us next month, we would be able to view final approvals may be done.
Considerably.
Would it be one meeting, like public hearing, final?
Yeah, it could be.
If they get their variance, why do they need any site plan review?
It's a good question. I mean, again, I was, well, they're building a a permanent coffee shop, which still needs site plan approval by the planning board. Even after the variance.
That's not, what if that's not happening? I didn't think they were going to start by with this before, like a year.
Or just start.
Yeah, like a year ago, I thought you guys said that the first plan, let's get a trailer, start making, make, see if it works and then building on.
Right.
Afterwards. So would they have to come get the variance to build on the other stuff or because they might do that in the future, they have to have it now? For the cost, the trail.
The variance is to allow the use on their property. Yeah.
Would it be wiser to let them have the temporary, go ahead, you know, get, hopefully get the variance, get the temporary license, see how things work out. Then, when you're ready to do permanent, then come to the planning board, you might want to look at the site a little bit differently. Would that be wiser to do it that way? And
this is going to be, I think we're getting the board because the the board is the approving agency for, oh, thanks. For site plans of restaurants. So my, what I, the the approach I was thinking was even though this coffee trailer is temporary, I can't, I don't seem to be able to fit it into some sort of administrative approval. It seems easy to do, right? I mean, it's just everyone can picture a food truck and the coffee truck or something. It's it's pretty low impact. It's temporary. So there's minimal environmental impact. It's approved by the health department. It's approved through our code enforcement office. There's already, there's already scrutiny about it. I just am taking the approach of, or my suggestion is just that I I don't see how, unless you all think differently, like, please let me know if you see something else that I'm not seeing. I don't know how I could approve a a restaurant use. And so.
Using your own authority.
Yeah.
But I don't mind voting on it.
Yeah.
Prove it either, you know, as long as, I just feel like it seems like it's pretty obviously that we could, I guess. You mean, like, the fact that what they're proposing fits and that we would, we would not be out of line to approve something like that. Right? You're just saying you don't want to have to be the one that does it by yourself, but for us, like, it just seems kind of obvious that it should be allowed. But that doesn't mean that you can just override stuff. So that's where the problem is. So you're saying you need us to say, yes, we think it's should be approved or we're no, I guess, but that we're once making the decision on it? Is that where kind of?
Yeah.
We're hung on?
We're deciding on the, we're deciding on the site plan, not the, not the use approval.
Right. Right. And so my suggestion would be just a
Because the location of the on-site is appropriate because they've already gotten the approvals and use the site without, because they get the variance.
Right. So as soon as they get that, my suggestion is just a very basic site plan and and maybe, you know, they've already drawn up a site plan. There's two of them here. It might be worth providing common suggestions, questions at this meeting right now because I think if the board is okay with a site plan of this, you know, you know, this depth, then that would be good for for Zach and Heather to know. And then if they get the area variance, then they can seek this, the site plan approval to operate this, this coffee trailer. And then when they want to, when they're ready to go forward with the main shop, they would come back for a site plan then.
Where it's actually built.
Where it's actually being built, yeah.
Yeah, and I I would say I wouldn't want to say to them, this has to be like, you know, just one year or whatever. I mean, I, the food truck thing, because who knows? You may need to do that longer than one year before you.
The health department will tell them they have to.
Yeah, but then they would go back and get another permit.
Right.
Just like any, anybody else.
Great. Once the use is approved.
Yeah.
That's with runs with the land.
Because you kind of, yeah, because you don't want to build a clientele driving into the from Owey Go and Candor who come and get coffee and they, oh, it was only for a year.
This was following.
Yeah. I mean, there might be reasons for that to happen, but I I just, you have a bigger plan than that ultimately. I mean, there might be reasons for that to happen, but I, I just, you have a bigger plan than that ultimately. And who knows how it's gonna move along.
You could, and so on that, that same line of thinking that um you could, uh as part of the approval, just maybe it needs to be, I I don't know if it needs to be stated, I was thinking the opposite, that if you wanted to say, the board thought, well, let's review it every year that this permit comes up, or you could just say, you know, what it's, if if you keep it like this, it's good. Um you know, and you just have to apply for the operating permit, you know, here and now, and it sounds like they don't want to you probably don't want to do this for too long of a time, but maybe this long enough that you just understand that. Probably, I mean, we're trying to figure out the timeline of doing this to starting the actual building and, you know, the part of the reason we're trying to push this along, we're changing site plans, we're doing less invasive earth removal, and open it one, so if it fails, we can break it off at this number.
Yeah, you can bring your chairs.
I want to say one thing really quickly, the only reason that the VZA gave us the variance to move our house on the concrete pad was that we promised we would come to do the coffee shop. Uh and, I mean, they joked about being a baker, which was funny, but that we, they were very serious about making sure that we followed up on the coffee shop. Now, uh we definitely need to uh make sure that we follow through on water management on the property to make sure that it works well. I know he's been studying all the things he needs in terms of working with water and with the subject, um but it's really important for us to keep that property healthy and improve, get the, get the invasive things, getting, get I'm sorry, I get nervous, uh to make the land as healthy and as sustainable as possible. Um, we also want to make that coffee shop a community space. Um because I know that there isn't one, we do want to have glasses and things like that, ultimately, but this first thing is like we're gonna try to have it hopefully done and built by the end of the year and ready to go, maybe?
November would be nice.
We've already contacted the health department, they were very kind, they sent me all the paperwork.
It's really just a deal off at the OT at this point.
Yeah, and so talking to y'all is important, because we wanted to, it is, it is pushing a little bit faster, but just getting stuff through them takes longer than anybody, so we wanted to, uh I know it's nice. We wanted to get that, we wanted to tell you what our plans were, and essentially, um we wanted to figure it out, this simple thing, I mean, uh you know, in terms of that space, we're thinking uh on the site plan, you've got three little parking spots on one side of the road, three parking spots on the other, easily put back and welded. Um, some picnic benches, I would like to put more trees, um. I want to get rid of all the Japanese not meat on the property, so that we have room for something like that.
I don't have the benches on the pond, and kind of like works things.
Have some shade areas, um but ultimately, all of that, even if, I'm gonna do all that. Regardless of the coffee trailer, so we hope that you guys uh like this and approve it. And we hope, we're still gonna know the property.
Oh.
To make it better.
Uh as far as the water, I think twenty twenty-six, is that where? I think that's, yeah, because next year, I'm trying to build our main house, and that's definitely won't take a year, so when that's done, we shall see what time here it is and go from there.
So by that point, we would have, um, coffee shop would have been there for a while. I mean, we've talked to our neighbors, and they all seem uh pretty excited, or in in no way upset. Um and even a gentleman, I was at Whiteaway Bakery, who drives in from Kandar, he was excited, so I'm thrilled about it, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes, and I also want to follow whatever guidelines are necessary. But I'm really excited about doing it, and I hope you guys.
So, yeah, you talked about the water, you'll need a second well for the coffee shop, I assume, not for the trail, but, no, okay. And then, with the trailer site on here, that meets the setbacks, I guess, it's hard to tell them, sorry.
You know.
Does it not need to?
No, I wouldn't even apply the setbacks for a coffee.
Okay.
Yeah, I I think, I think the most important thing is just out of outside, making sure that uh within their property and not on the DOT's right of way. Forty-five, or it's sixty.
Yeah, like it's still like start at fifty-two and. Does probably somewhere in the sixty range.
If you look at the property, like I found the pen, and it's all the way at the pond.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's the thing right before the ponds, yeah?
Yeah.
What if then we measure how it's talked about, and it's.
Would you follow the signage guidelines?
We've come up with a fun sign, too, we're excited about it. And we're very interested in the dark sky.
Yeah.
Did we talk about that with the whole last time? I think we did.
I have no objections to the way it is now, the only thought I have of looking at it is, I didn't know if you would it would make it a little bit further from the trailer, but line the future drive to the future parking with the parking now, so that if the future parking gets full, you have more of like a continuous. But it's totally up to you, I was just kind of thinking like, long term, then you'd have more in extended parking from the future coffee shop versus this thing that's kind of facing the street and not connected to the future coffee shop. But that's just the architect in me, that has nothing to do with your.
So, I, the future coffee shop parking is, um we're, we're trying to figure it out, so, because there's two options, and I'd rather not get in, I would.
Totally fine.
There's a giant swirl of Japanese not weird that needs to be taken out, though. I hate.
That is.
Yeah.
So, so the parking that we're seeing here for the coffee shop, the future coffee shop, that's to be determined.
It's just, yeah, I didn't have, kind of, but we haven't mapped it out, and we haven't, uh.
So we're not approving yet, to like.
Right, we're only looking at the sixth spot.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so what, yes, there's, there are two kind of renderings, this is an overall site layout. But um this is what would be really what the board is looking at for a, for a mine, you know, a minor site plan approval for the trailer, so here's the trailer here. Um, and then, six car, six uh parking spaces here that would be temporary. And honestly, I kind of just threw this together quick, I called this, but the one of them, what's that, it'll probably get bumped forward along with the, it's going on my stuff, it just keep tied on.
They go around those boxes part of your first road.
You have to take out less.
Yeah.
Zach, you're too far from, Zach is too far from the microphone to be audible.
He's right at the head of the table.
It's interesting, because I could hear Heather fine, but um.
Okay, sorry. Is that better?
Yes, and very much interested in what you have to say, so don't want to miss it.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, I guess I would, you probably know, is twenty-two enough for back to back? I was thinking twenty-four.
Uh it does seem a little bit tight.
Yeah.
Is this remotely a scale?
No.
Okay.
So there are eighteen. That's what I would be calling, making like a small scale set plan, and just so just to go back to process, is everybody, um, or the board on board with my you need to seek an area variance for the general restaurant use, so that's temporary or permanent. And then, they're seeking a, just an approval to have this coffee shop here, or some extended period of time, it's not an event, so it can't just be, then we're not going to permit, I mean, it will come in from it, but uh, you know, having some sort of board approval, um that, because there will be, you know, if they're very successful, which is what we hope them, you know, to be, um that there will be people coming in and out, and there will be a chain of people notice, so you know, I think there should be some eyes on it from the board of, um. When it gets the site in tax.
This is just a discussion.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing, uh, scale, site plan.
I think twenty-four, back to nine.
Thank you.
Right, because here, people backing out and not hitting the car behind them, they need enough room to raid us out.
It's, it's probably because we're making this light enough now, that we're like four feet away from that being the legal road to it, which I love.
But you're only making it this long.
I know.
Yeah, a little cheaper.
I know.
How come your survey is the wrong address?
What's that, is it maybe nineteen twenty-six, huh?
Yeah. And it references like Kelly and Nick's title instead of.
Yeah.
It's also recorded under the neighbors, like with the. Just, I, I.
Are you sure you're on this?
I know it's not the survey for nineteen twenty-six, like, I know that property, but I'm just saying, it's just.
So what's part of nineteen twenty-six at one point?
All the people.
So I'm curious if that's why.
Like Kelly and Nick. Here.
If when, yeah.
She's very sweet.
Yeah, that's the only reason, I mean, I noticed that, I was like.
The people that, that I do, are the people who. No, that would be Kelly and Nick, but the people that initially. This was the survey we got from.
Like, I think TG Miller is the title.
Yeah.
Anything else? Does the board want to set a public hearing for next month for this?
I mean, I mean, I would support moving it, moving it to the other thing again.
Is everything ready, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. Let's see, maybe they get the variance.
Okay. You want to do a motion, public hearing? Might just make it.
Let's take a vote.
Okay, I vote that we.
You you're not.
Do a public hearing at the next meeting.
I'll second that. And this is to approve the the site plan for the.
A final site plan, simple site plan for only the trailer.
Contingent upon the area.
Will they know by then, if they got the area there?
Don't know, just have them next year.
Okay.
Yes.
Fuller?
Yep.
Callan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Nucci?
Yes.
Martin? Yeah.
You're asking about the sign, oh yeah?
Yeah.
Is it by comment, or is it by our?
Uh it's just by meeting the code, which is, so, so uh the allowance is. Right, and so, yeah, it's eight feet tall, max twenty-four square feet in size.
We're gonna push back as much as you're pushing on. I mean, you can bring it if you wanted to show us how pretty it is, but it's really, well, just let go before.
You can basically go in general, how they do there.
Yeah, the more you show it, the more it'll be in that.
Yeah.
I would say the font is bomb, he voted.
I like the name of the font.
I don't want to say it's reading this.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I had a parent thing flown up this time, um.
Tell us about our email then.
Yeah, let's talk about emails, okay. There's no email. Well, no email shaming here, but uh everyone's having.
You already did that.
Everyone, everyone's having, they're accessing the emails, like, everybody is. Uh if you can't access your email, call the clerk's office, seven-seven, or seven-eight-eight, two-seven-seven.
It's on the newsletter.
Yeah.
Because I thought, I was like, I need to call her.
Mariah will give you your password, she'll tell you how to get on and get your email. But right now, everyone still has a town email. You should have a setting in your personal email account, though, where you can link your work email to your personal account, you should be able to do that.
The only thing is, like, once you do that, I don't know how to then email as my town. So every, all the queries, that's where my personal email, and I couldn't figure out how to.
You can't.
Like, sometimes I would.
Well, I was worried about emerging with my other work email, and how I would like differentiate what comes, but I'll just let my work.
Well, there is a tab where I can just click DMB, in my Gmail, what's Gmail? So, but when I reply to you guys, I don't know how to.
Right.
Make it come from that.
Yeah, this was always my person.
Right.
Which that, that's important, right?
Any insight? Joel?
Yeah, the Greg wasn't at the meeting last night, where the board came to agreement about how to modify our email policy. Um because the existing policy says anybody doing any business, I know, uh as um representing the town of Dambie um should have a town email, and do it, we're using the town email. Um we checked around, and it's um almost nobody does it that way in the state, even though that's best practice. And it's expensive, because every one of these email addresses is, um yeah, the, under, under Zohor was seventeen dollars a month, under under um, um what was it called? Outlook, it's, it's twenty-two dollars a month per user, so I mean, that adds up real quick, when you got fifty-some odd people who have town emails, many of whom weren't using it, some of whom, some of you, as you know, had trouble accessing and making it work. Uh and there were even a few who refused to use it at all, um despite the policy. So the, what we came around to is that, uh board and committee chairs, staff, and elected officials all will have and and should use a town email address. Uh anybody else, you know, members of boards, uh and committees and so forth, can have one if they want one. But they won't be required to have one. But if you don't um have one, uh any anytime you do any kind of correspondence, or um, or, or, you know, talk about, you know, town business, you shouldn't copy the chair so that the um, the the correspondence is captured for our records. Uh and then the policy will be that that is our, that that's our policy, you know, that that people doing business for the town of Dambie have to have their, either they have a town email account, or they um CC the chair and all communications. That won't keep somebody who's trying to sue the town for some reason from saying, but, but I know that Scott Davis had a communication, and it's not captured by your system. And so we want to look at Scott Davis's personal email account in order to uh capture, you know, to see what, what it was that he said about this subject. Um and anybody can sue anybody for anything, but in terms of our responsibilities as a town, you know, we have a policy, the policy is, you know, you, you, you will communicate using a town email account, or you will um CC the chairs. That's our policy. If there's anything else out there, it's up to you to try to find it out, we're not gonna help you, it's not part of our responsibilities under the free information law. So um Leslie Connors and I um are, were appointed to committee yesterday to work this up into a re- recommended change in the policy, and of course, all of this is transpiring, and the course is shifting over from, um you know, our, our, our still existing policy requiring everybody to have it, um which we're not enforcing um to the new policy, which is, you know, you can have it if you want it. We have people who say, I'm not doing business with, I'm not putting my personal computer and and. We have people who say, I'm not doing business with, I'm not putting my personal computer and, and communication records at risk. Um, for the sake of being a member of the planning board or the conservation advisory council, you know, I, I want a town email account. Those people, um, can have one. Um, anybody else, uh, you know, if you, if you don't want one, you don't have to have it.
When is this effective?
Yeah, yeah, when you, is there like projected effective date, I mean, I have to work this up, but in, in the meantime, policy still stands that everyone has needed an address.
It still stands, but I can say it's not being enforced, so, so Mariah has prepared a list of, you know, the people who have to have it. So any, all committee chairs. Um, you know, should have an email a- addressed, anybody who doesn't have one and doesn't want one. Doesn't have to, we're not gonna lean on you to get one and then lose, and then, and then you're unlose, you lose it when your policy changes. But you would have that option anyway, that's what we came around to, is that anybody who really wants one can have it. So it's, it's essentially, it's already effective, even though it hasn't been legislatively adopted.
But then someone needs the record of what the other email is that everyone's getting contacted at.
Right, that's why I'm like, how will I get the?
Yeah, so, which I guess would just be, right.
What was the question?
They elect not to use their town email, somebody has to know what email to contact.
Right, right.
Well, sure, yeah, right, I mean, you know, the, the, um, I don't think on the website. Uh, email addresses are posted for all the members of the committees and boards anyway. Um, usually the chair, you know, the, the way to contact a chair is there. Um, but not the members.
Trying to pick it if you want it and.
Like, we don't have to learn anything.
Right.
It's step one, but there's a second step too.
Yeah, so.
If you guys can't figure it out, I'm hopeless. I have fifteen days to figure it out.
I mean, at this point, what I was saying before is that it would be, I, I guess it's. Uh, to follow the current policy, it's get in touch with Mariah, get your password. Have Google or whatever save your passwords, you never have to type them in again. You know, every other week, check your email and just like, just see where communications, I don't send out too much stuff, you know, but. Or if you wanna provide me with your personal email address, then you can start using that, it's just. That, that wouldn't be adhering to a current policy and, uh, it might be something to a foil on your personal account, right?
Well, yeah, and I, depending on what you're involved with, I mean, I've got different email. Platforms for everything I'm doing, it's like a nightmare, but I would, I prefer not to have it whole and go.
Right, there's some people who said that they'll set up a separate, it's like a Gmail address just for, you know, the town business. And you could, that's an option also.
But at the bottom line, I do communicate everything, you know, with email, besides these. Personalized drop offs that I do, I'm sending training opportunities, the mess gets sent through there, um, I might. I might send something, uh, about a, I think I sent an article recently, just curiosity. You know, and, and, and that kind of thing, but definitely all business, if there's discussion about certain cases reviewed, that, that, that's a no go, we can't have that. Um, if it's two board members having an email exchange about a case, that's completely fine. Um, but when you get three, it starts, starts to get into a whole meetings issue, I was once chastised for that. Sherman Bird Planning Board.
What about when we have really large files and we use like the folders, right, that have the.
Yeah, like are they doing OneDrive now instead of?
We are, eventually, yeah, we're still on Zoho and things are slowly migrating into OneDrive.
And then we would ha- access that with our personal email?
Sorry.
We would access that with our personal email? If we didn't have a town email? Like that would.
Well, right now it's open. Right?
Yeah.
Access it on the website, now anyone can access it on the website now.
Probably.
Yeah. Right, anything that's accessible on the website would be accessible to anybody anytime. The only thing that is, it's ambiguous is about the stuff that's not on the web, but is relevant to planning. Or to zoning, or to, you know, any one of the other committees, the conservation advisory council is a case in point, you know, all the stuff about. Different easements and so forth is, is stored on Work Drive, it'll be stored in. Um, what's, what's the equivalent location in, uh, three sixty five, um, Shareplace, I think you call.
Sharepoint.
Sharepoint, okay, um, and who and how it's accessed is not yet clear. Cause just having a town email won't get you there either, you know, you have, there, there's layers of access that you have to, you know. In order for security purposes, there's supposed to be validation that you're a legitimate accessor.
I think the A C just like shut down.
Yeah.
So, so right now it's still Zoho, cause I've been getting stuff.
Well, it's both. Zoho is still where. Everything, all of our documents that I. Live in Zoho, but our email is now in Holo.
Yeah, when I went into email, I saw. Oh, okay, cause you just sent a training thing fairly recently and it came into my Zoho, into the Zoho.
I don't think before, it was only a couple of weeks ago that we made a switch.
Oh, okay, so I haven't really tried to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there were some slips too, I noticed it also in the beginning, so how come I'm still getting mail to, to the Zoho, um, you know, well, to the. Zoho mail, when, um, we're supposedly switched over and they say, well, there's a couple of things that didn't get. Didn't get, something weird going on, anyway, I think we got that mostly sorted out now, so that it shouldn't be happening going forward.
So I guess the last thing that I'll understand is, unless I hear from anyone. With their, with your personal email address you want me to use. I'll just expect that you're gonna call Mariah at two seven seven four seven eight eight and get your password. And start using that email for when I send things out, which is not fun, but, um.
Okay.
Great.
And, and sorry, it's, it's not. Well, yeah, like I'm, it's okay when I reply all from a personal, if I never figure that out, then that's not, I'm not violating. Like, that's allowed, right?
Right, cause as long as, if I'm. You know, well, as long as you.
Or if I hit reply all.
Yeah, cause it'll archive by whatever Danby emails are on there.
We still should not be, just in general, there should not be any discussion of.
Right, right.
Cases, it could be like, what time is the meeting, or do you send the package, it could be just sort of.
Yeah, the one was just about like COVID or something, you know, like.
Yeah, or like information or, or, uh. Just like logistical questions, but if you start talking about a case and you're copying everyone, you can talk about it with, with individuals. Just like one other person, but if you start to copy everyone, uh, somebody will have to say, wait, timeout, we gotta wait for a meeting to talk about that.
Okay.
I think that's it for the emails.
Yes.
There's, there's other stuff going on on my head, but, uh, I'd be happy to, we can update others later. Uh, we're, actually tonight, we're gonna hear if the, the town has awarded money to hire a consultant. Um, to write our C D B G homeowner rehabilitation grant, we're gonna go out for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars this year. Now, yeah, I mean, the five hundred thousand only helped out, I mean, only. Twelve homeowners. And the new round of funding, a lot of it has to go towards lead abatement, so it's still might only be twelve. This is a lot. So, um. Yeah, let's, uh. And I don't have other, uh, anything but. Oh, we're doing, uh, on, on Friday, we're doing a walk, the conservation advisory council on that property on four oh five Troy Road that we briefly looked at a couple of months ago. For a minor division, it was a seventy acre property on the border of Ithaca. Owner never showed up, there was a conservation easement question, we're walking his property this Friday, uh, to move forward with that.
For the easement.
For the easement, yeah, and then he called me today and asked, what happened with the subdivision, and I asked him the same thing, what happened with.
Now is one where they wanna have it in the Danby easement, not expanding the Ithaca easement, right, am I?
Yeah, they would do their own separate easement, yeah.
Right, cause they had talked, I guess at one point right about, cause it's Ithaca. Has preserved the, the nature conserves, they're talking, okay.
Yeah.
But they're gonna go with easement to us.
That's what the, that's what we're, we're working on.
Okay.
What, what, that's what their intention is, yeah. So. Uh, if you wanna follow up, we're like asking, you know, giving a call or shooting an email, happy to provide a. Better update on.
All right, thanks, everybody. Amazing endurance.
Greg, there's my email, you can send it.
So if we can do our personal email, you'll send it to. To that and we don't have to mess with the other stuff.
Yeah.
So if you talk to me, we need to add their personal emails to the.
Yeah, I just, I don't need eight more things to try to figure out how to do it.
Yeah, let's just send it to somebody.
Break their personal email down too, but please do a.
But now you're asking a lot. At least from me.
I need really hard, it's.
It warms up here quick. See, it warms up in here quick.
I thought it wasn't that cool from the beginning. Sorry, our call dropped early, but I thought we like caught up. I might call you again about the nineteen twenty six Gary Road, but. It's a little bit confidential. But I did. The subject is behind the house, so. Yeah, it's interesting to ask.